United States of America. And here the Republic of Washington. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty to live, to walk, to crawl.
Mayor Morandi?
Here.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
And we know Trustee Velotto is out.
Good evening, all you home viewers. Glad you're all joining us tonight. It's a long meeting, potentially. If anyone would like to wager bets, it's illegal, but you can send them in if you will consider them. We'll start off with the preliminary budget discussion and review, once Rochelle is ready.
All right, so handouts, I'm just gonna hand out the budgets. Did anybody send them? This is gonna be the general fund, water, sewer. I mean, double-sided, there's a lot of paper tonight. General, water, sewer.
Is this the one you sent us, the same one you sent me?
Water, sewer. You have all of it? Okay.
Rochelle, do you have the summary sheet, or it's just all numbers?
It's all numbers, right now. This is just the preliminary budget talks, so there's nothing really formal about it yet.
Okay.
Formal will come out on March 20th. The first big topic for discussion, because it's probably gonna be the longest one, I'd like to talk about the potential for employee raises, if any, changes like that. So that's what this is. These are sheets that have been emailed. I just want thoughts of what we should do, if we should do anything. The budget right now has 2% for employees as placeholders, and 5% for trustees and the justice. Just to see where we stand. The general fund budget overview right now, couple thousand dollars over, but that's assuming we don't get the A made, and I think we'll end up getting it, whether it's from the state or the county. So that'll be an influx of 16,000.
One thing, as I've discussed during the last weeks with Rochelle, is that it's important to try to get these numbers for the raises tonight, and kind of set that up if we can, because it gives more flexibility, where actually, we can decide on other, the other line items, if we know what we're doing here. So it'd be good if we can, we can, but it'd be good if we can get this straightened out tonight. So Lynn, we will start with you, if you'd like. Thoughts?
Um, I know you told us this.
Because I am really bad at this.
What did we raise people's budget completely space? What did we raise them last year?
Last year, it was 2%.
I'll be with it.
It was 2%.
Just push this down, I'll say on Steve's.
And then the year that there was increases to the health insurance company, health insurance contribution.
Contribution as well.
We increased those who had plans based on their, that one-year jump. If you had a family plan, you got a little bit more. If you had a single plan, so it wasn't a percentage of the flat dollar amount.
I'm in favor of a 2% again.
As far as the...
I mean, prices are going up, that's just on everything, so.
I was asked by a member what the rate of inflation, or what Social Security Administration had done. They had done a 2.8% increase.
2.8%?
Yes.
Well, I know gas prices are expected, they've been jumping weekly in the past month or so, after becoming very low. And then there's a better projection that it's gonna be over 3 by the summer. I mean, and everybody has to pay for that, so. I'm in favor of a 2%.
And this is, are we talking about, we're gonna, let's talk about employees only first.
Okay.
Okay. So Lynn's in favor of 2%. Your thoughts?
What was the contribution to the medical plan for 2019, 2020? Did it go up also for employees?
Yes, it will be at 14%, and it'll go up again one more year until they hit 15%. Anybody coming in, it starts at 15%.
Okay, and it's only up to 14% from what?
13%.
Okay. I'd like to have a conversation about not an across-the-board increase, but rather, an increase based upon merit or recommendations. I don't think the board has done this before, but we have received from at least one department, a recommendation that, one, is that people be treated based upon their contribution to the department. So I would like to have a conversation amongst the board. How do you feel about doing that?
At this point, I would almost like, I feel like I'd like to wait on that until the next round, because we haven't had formal reviews from managers or from supervisors, and I don't think there's time to do that, to request that at this point, where we're down to the crunch. I would like to do it, but I don't think this is the time for this budget cycle. I'd like to do it maybe for next budget cycle, and then ask for reviews from the managers maybe three months in advance, so that we have an idea of where we're standing with this.
So you're recommending not to do anything this year?
No, no, I'm recommending not to do a merit raise this year.
That's, sorry, let me restate.
Sorry.
So you're recommending not to, not to alter the raises based upon contribution this year? And you're also recommending, by default, you're recommending that an annual review be put in place this year, so that next year, people can be evaluated, and their increases can be based upon the results of their review. Is that correct?
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good.
We also have a bunch of new employees, you know, from this past year.
We have employees who have been with us for a year, or six months, and in many cases, they have demonstrated their abilities and their willingness to take on additional work, or work the extra hours that some of the jobs require. So the concept was to recognize those people. Yes, they get overtime, but to recognize them in their normal base pack for work that they've done over and above.
And how would we, how would we determine that? Would we, would that be the recommendation of their supervisors?
Yes, yep, based upon the recommendation of their supervisor.
Would we give the supervisors a range of percentages, say? Or, I've seen it where you give the supervisor a range of percentages. You know, your employees can get 0 to 3%. Or give them a dollar amount, and say divide it up among your employees.
Okay, before we go down this rabbit hole, and we want to move things along tonight, I'm in agreement with Fran. I'm not, I may not be for this next year, or whatever. I think we can discuss this, I don't think we can do this right now, and have an evaluation within the next month of employees. I don't think there's, we have to set some criteria, we have to have some, you know, something that the highway person can check off, as far as, you know, timeliness, or, you know, whatever, that's gonna, they're gonna be evaluated. I don't think we have time to do that. I also don't want to discuss all tonight on how we would come up with that. I think if we wanna, if we want to discuss that for next year, I think we should have that discussion, and, which I'm willing to have, and see how that would work, and see what criteria we could come up with. For tonight's discussion, I'm not in favor of doing a merit-based, and I'm in favor of 2% for the employees.
Lynn?
Yes?
I'm in favor of 2.5% for the employees, based on the fact that the cost of living and the Social Security went up between 2.8 and 2.9. So I think 2.5 is closer to that than 2%. So I thought to look at 2.5%.
Marie, if we don't go with merit discussion, are you any interest in raising?
Yes, 2%.
Okay, so, 3.2 is a 2.5, and Steve is absent. So we could do one of two things. We can actually decide tonight, or leave our votes like this at the next budget meeting, get Steve's input, and then make a final decision.
Do you think we should go tonight?
I think we should go tonight.
Okay. So, based on voting, it would be 2%?
2%.
Fran, you know the oddness. 2, 2, 2, Fran, okay with 2? Okay. So 2 has been decided. We're gonna do 2% raise for hourly employees. So that would include, but not limited to, just a quick overview. The court clerk, the village clerk, or any part-time clerks that we have. We have a couple of those. Everybody in the highway department for the hourly, the crossing guards, seasonal worker for recreation department, three employees in water and sewer, and myself.
And Michael?
He's considered a part-time clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
But he doesn't share food, so.
Yeah, him and Ann are considered part-time clerks. So, next discussion then would be...
Well, just before we go into that, we definitely, I don't know when we, we'll have the merit discussion, like, maybe in a few months, or whatever. So I don't want to lose that, but we'll have that soon enough.
If you push it off for a few months, the argument will be, at the next budget, that people didn't have the time.
When would you like to have it?
Next, next meeting.
Next meeting? Sure, we'll have the discussion next meeting. I would get information out, and I would have every one of the employees, the people that are gonna be doing this evaluation here on that discussion meeting, which would mean Greg, or, well, he'll have a successor maybe, but Greg will be here now, and Bugsy, and...
Jeff.
What's that?
Jeff.
And Jeff. And Jeff would be, he's overseeing who?
Ann.
Rochelle.
And I believe Rochelle.
I don't know if Jeff is the authority over Rochelle, does he? You do? Okay. You have the whole, okay, and what about Kathy? Who's rating Kathy?
I don't think Tom would, which is a little, I mean, it's open.
For all budget requests, the court judge always requests that it stays in line with everybody else. So it would still be treated, I guess, the same way. I do think, and I know we don't want to talk about this now, that if the recommendation comes from the supervisor, the absolute final decision would come from the board. Just making sure that that's clear.
What's that?
The final decision would come from the board.
Yes, absolutely.
Supervisor, I don't even know if they should give, per se, the raises more so than just give their feedback, and then, before he can decide the numbers.
I agree, and they're gonna have to come up with a criteria.
So then, we've got that for next meeting. So then, moving forward with this meeting, there are two categories of stipends and salary. So the board of trustees and the judge are considered salary employees, and then there are hourly employees that have stipends. Did I not run it off? I'm sorry. I didn't run off the raises for the trustees. Did anybody print it? Fran, I know you have it.
I do.
We can either...
You can share it, and run some copies?
Run copies, or we could share it. What are your thoughts? We've looked at anywhere from 1% to 10%.
Zero, I think we have to start, consider zero.
Zero, so 0 to 10. Um...
Talking salary now, right, boy. I'm sorry, there were a category...
Let's talk about the board first.
Okay.
A piece of paper, the board. So the board and the judge are salaried employees.
Oh, judges?
And then there's the acting justices, who gets a small salary.
Can I, I looked at the sheet you printed up for me today, or you sent us anyway. I'd like to make a recommendation that we do with the deputy mayor's compensation, and the extra compensation for the deputy mayor, what we did with the trustees in 2014, where the trustees, trustees used to get paid a salary plus a stipend for each board that they represented, and we combined that. Can we do that with the deputy mayor, so that the deputy mayor has a different line than the other three trustees, rather than the deputy mayor having the same salary as each trustee, and then an additional amount?
Um, you could, it doesn't really make a difference. I mean, for budgeting, I would still have to break it out that way. It's been historically that way.
Consistency.
It would look, for three years, there'd be a change when we're comparing budgets. I mean, we could.
I think we should leave it.
I think we should leave it. A trustee is a trustee in their capacity, plus the deputy mayor. I'm going, so in that packet, you have the history of the raises for mayor's trustee, deputy mayor. I'm gonna print real quick, just a brief...
The last time raises went through was 2013, for trustees, and 2012 for the mayor?
Well, Rochelle's gone, I'm gonna read the police report, 'cause I want to keep things moving tonight. Larry couldn't be here, he's also, he's got his fireman's hat on, he's on Wednesday. So the monthly report, let's see, aided cases were 12, oh, I'll just go to the bottom numbers. Total number of calls for service were 48. Total number of tickets issued were 68. He's adding, and I asked him if he'd add the total for the year to date, so next month, we can, you know, check and compare, you know, how many tickets were given over the month compared to the last month.
Okay, he has given you the total calls year-to-date at the bottom.
Right.
So he's doing some of that.
Yes. So that's the police report, and some of the others, I wouldn't know what they are. Officers need assistance, and whatever. So I'll have an abbreviated police report tonight. Back to the budget.
So, on this sheet, right now, I have 2%, 3%, 4, and 5. Keeping in mind, so for a trustee, a 2% raise comes out to $12 a month, $1.45 for the year. If we wanted to keep it in line with the employees, we could discuss zero, like Marie said. If we want to go down again, starting with Lynn?
Sure. Lynn, you want to start it up again? Or would you like to mix it up? I don't want to put the...
Let's mix it up.
Heat on you.
I want to look at this.
Fran, would you like to make a recommendation?
I'm looking at this, and since there hasn't been a raise for trustees for the past six years, I think 5% is not unreasonable. That would totally increase the total budget by less than $3,000, and I think that's not unreasonable. And I think we also need to sort of put in line the fact that this needs to be looked at every year, so we're not doing big jumps every six years or so.
I, I, I agree with the 5%. I think if, either we do like 1% from now on, or in the years, or whatever, but doing catch-up, and then making it look like, oh my god, they're giving 5%, when it means $12 a month. I, I know for sure that Fran and Marie, the amount of time they spend in the office is, I think, a little more than $12. So I think that there definitely has to be at least an acknowledgement of the work being done. So I'd go with 5%. Marie?
Okay, so, I asked for zero, a zero line. I'd still like to go with a zero line. I suspect I'm going to be voted over that. But I would like to, Camille Linson, lovely person. Has she, has she run her court at all this year?
She has in the past, I can't say for this calendar year, she has. When Tom has been on vacation, she's, there's been a need for her to come in.
Was that once?
A few times, that's...
Okay, I, I'm not sure why, we didn't ask for a history, my apologies. But I, I don't see why, Camille, who is a lovely person, I think she's very...
The position, so if the position doesn't merit...
I don't think the position warrants an increase. I certainly don't think that Mayor Morandi as budget officer deserves any increases at all. I'm joking, I'm joking. I do question whether or not, given the circumstances, we want to increase Greg Phillips. This is his stipend.
We're talking about salaries right now, so...
Salary versus...
Okay, we did talk about salaries, all right, right, okay.
So we're just talking about salaries for now. So this would be the board, including the mayor, Camille and Tom.
Okay, so, my...
Zero, and you have comments about the acting justices.
Yes.
Just to go back just to Greg, though, if Greg does leave in July, we raise his, we increase his by 2%, does that have some type of negative effect on our... I mean, he'll be, he'll be receiving that 2% for one month?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So long as he left in July?
Yeah, yeah.
Lynn's thoughts?
And whoever his replacement is, you will have already committed a number to that individual, not necessarily...
Yes.
Yeah, no, they'd be totally independent of this discussion.
Well, I agree with Dave, that some recognition of the enormous work that Marie and Fran do, and the number of hours that they put in. So I would go with a 5%.
Can I, can I just add it in?
Yeah, Larry.
In conjunction with what Marie just said, can we set the acting justice salary at 2,500, and just leave it as a flat number? Rather than having the acting justice be sort of connected with our raises whenever we give them out, that doesn't really make sense, 'cause they're not really a full-time employee. It's almost like a stipend, rather than a salary. And I'm just wondering if we could just set it as sort of a stipend, and keep it a flat number.
But right now, it's almost 203 a month. That doesn't matter to me. You can keep it, you can change it, whatever.
So, so Fran, you're recommending a 2-plus percent raise for Camille?
And then just leave it flat, consider it more as a stipend, or 2,450, whatever. I mean, I'm not necessarily, I'm just more looking at why the acting justice, who basically just comes in, as you say, when Tom's on vacation, or when Tom's sick, or whatever. It's not really a salaried position here. I mean, it is, but it doesn't seem to me to be a regular employee, and it should be more like a stipend type of a thing.
If we do it as stipend and 2,500, that's fine with me, the time we were talking.
2-plus percent?
It comes out to about 2.5%.
$20?
2.5% would bring it to 20,000 for 95. So it's a little over 2.5. We could do that, we can do 5% for the board, 5% for the justice, and then the acting justice would just be a flat 2,500. So essentially, be getting half of what everybody else is getting, in terms of raises.
Fine.
Um, so, we have three fives and a zero, so are we going with five? Okay. Five for the mayor, five for the trustees, five for the deputy mayor, five for the justice, Camille, a flat 2,500. So then the last category of raises to talk about is stipends. These are for people who have functions...
Additional responsibilities.
Mm-hmm. The budget officer, crew chief, water, wastewater superintendent, registrar, and a building liaison, because the title's made too long. These don't have to have any changes, they can have changes. They could be individual changes. I just wanted, if we're talking about salaries, I wanted to encompass every portion of somebody's salary.
Marie, you want to kick this one off?
Sure. I, I think we should leave Greg flat. We know that he's going to be leaving us. I don't see the need to incent him with an increase. The, I, I certainly think that, Bossy, Bossy stipend, what does that bring him to? That leaves 2%? I know what I'm doing is merit here. It's, right, okay. So, the crew chief line on the EE raises, is that right? And then the other line for that, that's his years of service?
$1,000 this year, so.
What is it, well, I forgot.
Long journey.
Long journey.
Long journey, thanks. Yes, I think that should be there. The budget chief, the registrar, I always have a problem with the registrar. Not, not with the individual, but with the, the stipend that goes along with it. Since the work seems to be in the normal hours of the individual's job, I question the fact that that individual, who is currently registrar, receives a stipend.
So then, what I would say is that that person receives a stipend, because it's her name on everything, so she has added responsibility with it, like, files all the paperwork with the state, like, it's her name. Like, Jeff is the treasurer, so he's responsible for all the finances, even though I'm the accountant, it's Jeff's name that gets tied to it. So her name gets tied to all the registrar documents.
Okay, but he doesn't get any, anything extra from it?
It was built into his salary, I believe, when it was decided.
Well, is that with any, is that with Mary also?
Just another way to look at it, because I know that she does, it is part of her everyday job, but I think it's the responsibility. I always saw it as the added responsibility.
So I guess I, I would go with 2%. With the exception of Greg.
What are you going with?
2. Actually...
With the stipends, any changes to the amount would also require then changes to the employee...
Handbook.
Handbook, because the dollar amounts...
Are stated there.
Are stated within the employee handbook, in the benefit outage.
So last year, did we give stipends, or did we raise the stipends last year?
No.
No?
They were just added.
Yeah, traditionally, I think with the exception of Greg, because if you look at that odd number, it would seem like percentage was added to that somewhere along the line. But traditionally, the percent increases do not apply to stipends. And I believe it was written into the employee handbook with the stipends that annual percentage increases do not apply to stipends.
Unless they were thought about separately. That's why I'm just bringing it up, we don't have to make changes.
And do they, does that then require a public hearing, if we're gonna change that?
Change the employee, no, it's our own employment.
Yeah, would require a resolution, we would have to change, change the handbook.
Okay, I, I'll agree with Marie, I'd go 2%, just to keep things moving up a little bit. And I also think Greg, there's no reason to give that extra money.
Because he's already getting 2% on his base.
I am gonna disagree here, I don't think the stipend should get any raise down, straight down the line. I think stipend is a stipend, it's for the job. And I don't think we should be nick, you know, nicking and diming it with 2% here, you know, $50 annually, or whatever it is. I think stipends should stay flat.
Okay. I wasn't expecting that.
You want to reconsider your vote?
Well, it's your permission.
Well, I think there's merit in that argument, in that, in that it's not like the job that a person does to earn the stipend changes from year to year significantly. You know, it's not like we're adding more responsibility to get greater stipend. So I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, that work that they're being paid for has a specific, is very specific, and very particular parameters. So I'm in favor of no raises on the stipend.
I, I, I agree with Fran. I agree with the logic that you just articulated. If it were me that was one of these five people, I would say, I'm getting an increase in my base salary, which minimizes the value of my stipend. Right, I, I agree with you both, okay. So I'm, I'm not arguing for 2%, 5%, whatever. But as an individual, I, I might feel that my, the value of my work, the extra work that I'm doing, that I have been doing, has just been minimized, because my salary has gone up. I'm devil's advocate.
Marie, you're being a devil's advocate.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So, what are you, are you staying, sticking with?
I'm, I'm, I'm with the, the zero percent.
Okay. I'll be the good guy on this one, and stick with my gun, political way to save face.
All right, so we have three zeros and one two, zero wins for those stipends.
Just, just a fast note, I don't know if this should be brought up here, I, I believe when we discussed Greg's replacement, that the stipend and salary would be different.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we'll get to that when you get to that.
So, salary discussion, any final thoughts, roll in agreement?
Yes. I, I, I would say yes for myself.
Okay. So. We're gonna, I'm gonna hand out two more sheets.
So in this, there's just a slight uplift in, in this budget, based upon what we, what was just approved. In the sense that, I think you said, no, you said
I have two percent, five percent.
Yeah, two percent, five percent, so it went down, it goes down a bit, because the stipend.
I did not put anything for the stipend.
Okay.
I assumed that the stipends would, I predicted the future.
Now we have to give a stipend for that.
The only thing that we change is the justice will go down a few dollars. Um, okay, so, gonna move into some of the heart of the general fund. I'm gonna hand out an overview, these are my notes that I emailed to, along with a new sheet, which is going to be a summary of fund balances for all three funds. And budget notes. Do you have the budget notes? You don't have these? Okay. So, the fund balance, um.
This is a slush fund, and I, I encourage you, I need you to be correct.
It's the fund balance.
Thank you, that's what it is.
Um. So for right now, for eighteen, nineteen, I'm going to assume that we don't have any surplus right now. Um, I'll be honest, I've been working on the budget that I haven't gone back, even though I wanted to, through February, to see where we stand. I have an idea where, where we stand through January, but there are so many seasonal items. Um, so for this discussion, I'm gonna assume zero. Um, that we're not adding to the fund balance, but I believe at least for the general fund, that we will, and I think we will for water and sewer as well. Um, so, for the general fund, at this point in time, um, the bottom number, um, our fund balance would be almost six ninety-four.
On last year on the sewer, I know we raised rates and whatever, so last year, did we have a balance there, or were we, did we have to borrow for that?
We had, um, a small fund balance for sewer, last year.
Yeah.
Um, but we're not supposed to use the fund balance to sustain the fund, it's supposed to be used for like one-off projects. Um, so we had to raise rates so that the fund would be self-sustaining.
And we did an inter-fund transfer, last year.
We always do, yeah.
And, and that increases the fund balance for water and sewer, is that correct?
Water and sewer contribute to the general fund.
Water and sewer contribute to the general fund. With water and sewer maintaining their own fund balance now, because they're in a more positive position, can, so, the good news is water and sewer should give money to the general fund, but the bad news is water and sewer lost money from their respective funds, can we look at stopping that?
I don't know about stopping it fully, I have been slowly reducing it. I think that the water and sewer idea of them contributing to the general fund, um, is because, you know, they're bringing in extra revenue. I would have to look into it more in detail, you know, if the state has any guidelines on it.
Yeah.
Um, but the majority of municipalities that I have looked at always have these inter-fund transfers.
Yeah, we had talked about the, um, sewer is going to in, the number of units is going to increase this year, and the number of water units are also going to increase this year.
Yes. Yes.
My expectation is that will occur at the end of the second quarter of the year.
So.
By, by then.
Water and sewer for Butterfield, I assumed that there was going to be the addition of twenty units.
Okay.
Um, for ha- and that they would be occupied for half the year.
Right.
So essentially, ten units of a full year.
Right, and.
And that's those numbers that I worked off of for the nineteen twenty budget.
So, that, that, what's going to happen, as soon as the units come online, not when they're occupied, but as soon as the units are in ha- are habitable, water and sewer will be activated for them.
I think that might, I don't know, is that true?
Yeah.
As soon as, because once they're built, they're gonna have the water meter, and the connections are already there, so how would we know to, are we gonna be charging Butterfield as a landlord until they sell their condos?
I, I believe that's what we will do.
I think we'll have to bring, um, Greg into this discussion, um, because I believe he thought differently. That when, at the time of purchase, that that's when water and sewer will be turned on.
Because once there's, the meter's installed, once we activate the meter, at least, we'll be getting the flat rate charges, they may, that may not be any consumption, or very minimal consumption, but we'll get the flat rate charges, just because they're not sold. Once that meter goes in there and is activated.
Okay, yeah, once, once, once the water is activated, and the sewer is activated, people can use the water, they can use the sewer. And so, it, okay, seems to me that we'll get some readings, but we'll also get the rent.
Okay, I did not adjust usage at all for revenues for nineteen twenty, just fifty percent of the flat rate, assuming there's twenty units that will
Okay.
come online. So, those are, so that's, those are the fund balance numbers, um, so six ninety-four is what we can work off for the general fund when we start thinking about projects. Um.
And there's nothing coming out of the six ninety-three this year, I mean, for the next few months. To do, out of the six ninety-three, the fund balance, is there anything we?
No, I have it in there, it was the ninety-nine thousand for the firehouse roof. So the firehouse roof ended up coming in higher.
Right.
If we have a, extra revenue in other places this year, I'm not gonna take that extra eight thousand out of the fund balance.
Right.
But if we're short on revenue, so if you wanna call it six
Yeah, that's okay.
eighty-five or something, no? So then, while we're here, let's do that, let's start talking about big projects. Big projects for the village, throughout the village, anywhere. Um, buildings, walls, wish lists.
Roof, yeah.
So let's start with the roofs here.
Okay, so the roof, I've got tomorrow, I meet with one more person, that'll be five. Um, the only bid we got so far were the people that did, uh, did the firehouse roof, and if we go with not, with prevailing wage, it's twenty-three thousand, if we go with a non-provening wage, it's eighteen thousand. That's the only bid, yesterday I met with two guys, so, we should have numbers by, by next week. Or meeting, I mean, but the guy from Easy Flow came in today.
He did?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good. Paul?
Paul, yeah.
That was Rob.
Yeah. And he was good, he was quick. I spent hours with the other guys, they measured every inch of everything.
Oh, that guy was.
Is he six foot ten or something like that, is he the real?
No.
Then it's Rob, then it's Rob, he's six ten or something like that.
It definitely was not six ten.
So we have the roof.
Because Steve isn't here tonight, let me bring up the, um, door on the new building at the sewer treatment plant.
I forget, um, I got some numbers from Greg, you want me to go get those, they're on.
For the sewer door?
Well, he had, he gave me a couple less than the time, I think it was fourteen, let me go run and get them, discuss whatever you'd like, talk about it if you want.
That Dave.
I know.
Oh.
I'll grab a piece of paper.
Did you have numbers on the floor here, Dave? Do you have numbers for this floor or?
This was, uh, taken care of by insurance. So I, we don't, I don't know if we go over what that is, I think it was for carbon. Well, we got twenty-eight, so we'll start something, so I think that'll be covered.
In the energy package, there's no worksheet that I had sent you.
This should be the last page.
Oh, there it is, way up the top, thank you.
Waiting for my talk.
Thank you, thank you. So, to re-outfit this room, it's covered by insurance, from the water damage.
This is affecting everybody's prediction for the end of the meeting.
No, I, I don't, I wanna know what the winner's gonna get.
Wait, I didn't get to bet, did you guys take bets?
What do you want to bet, Jen?
You're on.
What's, what's your time, what do you think?
I'm gonna say eight o'clock. I have to wait it?
I like it.
That's the earliest.
I hope you won. I hope you won. So it's fourteen thousand for the doors, a thousand dollars for the louvers, I don't know exactly what that is. And he didn't give a, he doesn't know what the price is for to finish the siding on a building. I would say, you could put five thousand in for something, it's probably less than that, I don't know.
So, for this project, um, let me clarify, it's definitely to finish the doors on the new sewer treatment plant, correct?
Right.
We still have a little money left over.
It's gonna come out of the.
From the ban.
Yes.
So we don't have to worry about, um, finding this money in the sewer.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be taken care of from the ban.
Is there a limit as to when we have to use that?
No, um.
Like these are expired when we bond or?
So how the ban works is like you could pay down a minimum, and then pay down whatever else extra that you don't want, so you don't have to keep, um, paying interest on it every year. When you go to bond, those have to be firmer numbers. Um, so since we haven't bonded, um, I knew that this project was still going to happen at some point, I kept renewing the ban for more than what the project is gonna be, um, so we don't have to, we still have to be competitive, you all right, Dave?
Yeah.
Um.
Probably my head up.
Be competitive, um, and responsible, but we have money to do it.
Um, that, that ban is particularly for the wastewater plant, so we can't use it for roof here.
It's been offered specifically for, that's why I wanted to verify that the doors were for that building and not somewhere else.
No, it's that building.
The other one for water, wastewater, well, it was when the, I guess, at the pump station, the generator on New Street, there was an enclosure that hasn't been finished, it's fairly small, but I don't know where that money started from, or originated.
Pump station.
It's not a pump station, I think it's a generator on New Street.
The one that they moved from waters, from West Street?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, they moved it from West Street, to get it out of sit this, the standing, because it flooded, it went from West Street to the corner of New Street and Market Street.
Oh, okay, so FEMA paid for that, right? That's this pumps, FEMA paid for the West Street pump station to be repaired.
Okay.
So, if it was moved, then I would assume that FEMA covered those costs.
Okay.
I can't, um, because everything that, I'm just finishing FEMA now, everything says West Street on it, electrical, all that stuff. So they paid for some type of fence, um.
Yeah, they put it, they enclosed that, the pump station, because they did some work there, and, but then they moved the generator up farther, up, up, up the street a bit.
So then that's not part of a ban, and that's not part of FEMA.
It's a very small project, it's, it needs one, uh, length of fence and a gate, but we should finish it off, it's probably, I was just, if you wanna put a thousand dollars down for it, I, I would hope. I think we have the materials, we just, I, I, I did most of it, it never got finished.
Okay, the last time I looked, there was a, a piece of fence that was laying against.
Laying there, yeah, might not be there now. There is another piece, but we wanted to add some.
Cause it's a new.
Finish that, it's the corner of, uh, New Street and Market Street. It's the, um, it's the southwest corner of New Street and Market Street. Uh, another topic is the staircase from, uh, Main Street to Maple Terrace. It's wrought iron?
Yeah, uh, it's iron.
Iron, uh, and it's disintegrating. Uh, we have an estimate for two steps, um, cast, cast iron steps, but not installed, right, it's just, here's your steps.
I'm not sure, that never was done yet.
To the best of my knowledge, there's, it has not been done.
It's a repair on the one of those.
It's a repairs, but not.
Um, but I, I believe that more work is necessary to make the steps, um, safe, it's a question of safety. Um, so, in my mind, we either fix it properly, which may involve the hand drills and the steps, or alternatively, we rip it out and replace it with grass. Um, I would not recommend changing the crosswalk, I would leave the crosswalk exactly where it is. Um, we had considered moving the crosswalk to the top of Main Street, but it's too dangerous for children to cross there with cars that are coming west on three oh one, they come around blind turn, and, and it would just be unsafe. So, we would leave the crosswalk there, so we wanted two alternatives, both of which will require money.
I think maybe we should have it evaluated, I, I, I didn't think it was that bad.
Okay, but, but I, I agree with you, doing an evaluation is reasonable.
I think at one point, um, Bugsy said he was, he understood from Eddie that some vendor in the neighborhood had the cast for the steps, but when he went to talk to the guy, the guy doesn't seem to remember that he had them, or couldn't find it, or something. Because it was a cast for those steps, that, was that, was that Eddie gave to a vendor, I don't know if it's.
It's fairly simple, there's some landings that need one, that, uh, one of the guys from Phillips Town, they lent us, a guy that came down and welded.
Orangeade.
Uh, what's that?
Orangeade, I see.
Yeah, it was Johnny Jessick from the town.
Oh, oh, oh.
Came down and welded, and then the steps, there were some that were broken that they're replacing, but they can easily be replaced, they're, they're lagged in, or not lagged in, they're carriage bolted in, so they can be taken off, so as long as it's just replacing them as they go, that might be, that might be the way to go, so I think it should be evaluated, to what we got.
Okay. But, um, so I think we should put some money in to do that work, the evaluation and replacement of some of them.
I'll, I'll talk to our engineers and ask them to, to take a quick look at it.
What other projects?
Well, I think there's the, uh, well, we're just getting the, uh, some preliminaries from, uh, the engineers, P and D, for the roads for Fishkill Lab, and for um, Fishkill Avenue and, uh,
Garden.
Garden Street, and also fire, uh, the firehouse evaluation was, I think, did you get that, it was like fifty-seven hundred, I think, that was for the evaluation. Um, I think we should go ahead with that, and discuss that. The others, there's, it's, I'm not su- I asked them, but I'm not, still not quite sure how they work their percentage, if we want them to move ahead and get everything ready, and then put it out the bid, and if the bids come in way too high, I don't know, but I think we should at least have it evaluated, or, you know, have them do the work on it, the engineering that's needed, but.
On it, are we talking about the paving or?
Both of the two pavings, yeah.
Okay.
And also remove the, okay, we start with the firehouse, firehouse was an evaluation of the, of the whole building, the envelope, and also the, uh, heating system. And that was eighty-seven hundred dollars, and that was working off the last one. And what they'll do is come up with what's needed, the condition of the building, and what we have to do. And that also included collapsing floor, and, and everything like that.
Just everything.
Everything was discussed. So, I, I think we should move ahead with that.
Move ahead with letting them do the evaluation for the eighty-seven hundred, okay.
Evaluation, yeah, yeah, definitely. Then the other one was, there was two different prices, I don't have them on me, for the, uh, for Fishkill. You know, they had a, they had a percentage on that, but I don't know how the percentage works, or if they just do all that work, if it's a percentage of what they're anticipating, or what the actual number comes in at.
Well, we had the estimate on Fishkill, uh, based upon the engineering done by CHA, uh, and the estimate, uh, I sent you that over the weekend, that was from Comtech. And it's, it was either a hundred and thirteen or a hundred and thirty thousand, and that was doing the work based upon CHA. And it was either a hundred and thirteen or a hundred and thirty thousand, and that was doing the work, based upon CHA.
That was just the engineering?
No, 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 the engineering.
I'm just talking about the engineering.
Or engineering's already been done on that, and we have that.
The engineering on, on everything?
Fishkill Avenue.
On, on, on the sidewalks, and the, and the design in the sidewalks, and all of the elevations for the roads?
I think so, Fran, we, we got the CAD, which we can't open, uh, 'cause we don't have, uh, CAD here. But I believe they also sent the, um, the hard copy.
Yeah, they, while back, they sent us the hard copies.
So we, we have something that was done by CHA.
I thought, and that wasn't just a corner with the catch basin, it was the entire street?
It was the entire street to Main Street.
Okay, well, if we have that, that'll.
And, and we have, we have the bid from Contech, which, uh, should, the bid package should contain quantities, I would think. The, the bid packages contain quantities.
It depends on how the RFP was written, it depends on how the RFP was written, if it's asking for quantities, or if it's asking for.
I'll pull that out and do it, come line by line, just make sure everything's.
The, the bid, at the bid opening, I think we received three, uh, bids for, for Fishkill Avenue. We received at least three bids for Main Street. Contech, they sent me over the weekend, they sent me the one bid sheet from Contech, and it was either a hundred and thirteen or a hundred and thirty. I can't remember the amount, but that was doing the work based upon the bid specifications that were put out by CHA. So we have those bid specifications, it should be in the bid package.
That's a massive gap, though, that's three hundred thousand that they're estimating this at, and you're saying it's a hundred thousand from Contech.
Yeah, but are they estimating including the engineering?
What's that?
Are they estimating?
Yeah, that's including engineering, contingency.
We have the engineering.
What's that?
So we're not including, we're not including the engineering.
No, no, but I'm just saying, if, if that, if that, if Contech went out and, and drafted, you know, a document for them to bid on, which seemed to be extensive and included drainage and everything, that was the reason why we stopped it, and it came out to a hundred thousand dollars. And P and D does the same work, and it comes out to three hundred thousand dollars, we're off a little bit.
Yeah.
And it's not a contingency number.
Uh, we agree, we're off a little bit. Now, it is possible that the contact number of a hundred and thirteen or a hundred and thirty thousand did not include mobilization because they were already planning to be here, did not include, um, traffic control, because they were already planning to be here. So it's possible that a number of the elements that are probably listed in the P and D package were not identified in the Contech package because they were submitting two bids, one was for Main Street and was, one was for Fishkill Avenue, assuming they were going to be doing concurrently.
You would still, if you have traffic control, you're still gonna have to add it into your work, you know, it's not like you're down the street on Garden Street, so you don't need it up there.
Well, if you're.
You're gonna need someone there, and you have to include that in your.
That assumes you're doing them concurrently, but you're, if you're doing them serially, you don't have to do that.
No, you're still gonna have someone doing it, you're gonna have to have somebody on a bulldozer up there, you know, leveling the street, just because you have them down on Garden Street, doesn't mean you have to, you're not paying them up there.
I, I agree, the money would come out.
I, I, I don't, I don't see how, if, I.
I get the mobilization, but not the, the traffic control.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they wouldn't necessarily be doing them concurrently, they would be doing them, it's possible the plan was to do them serially.
So we would have to look at both bids to see, you know, um.
So.
Not the bids, I think we have to look at the engineering.
The engineering, yes.
So we have the, the engineering, we have the bid specification that includes the engineering, um, CHA. Which we could make available to P and D, and ask them how their proposal differs from what CHA proposed to be done.
I'll just, if we can get it, the documents, and look at the documents, and see what they're proposing. Maybe there's, well, I, I thought that there was more drainage in C, uh, CHA's.
The, the drain, the drainage was going to be done on the north, on the north end of the street, including one pipe that was gonna go from the north end of the street, south.
Yeah.
But not the entire length south, it was gonna go to a midpoint, where there was, that was gonna hook up with another drain pipe.
Okay. And they were, were they doing, well, we'll, we'll just look at them, right now it's a guesswork.
So Fishkill, um, we don't have a number, um, so that will leave open ended for Garden, um.
And plus Fishkill, we're not gonna be able to do any.
So for Chips, as of January, and I don't think we've submitted anything since January, so we have a hundred and twenty-one thousand balance in Chips. And then if we get what we've been getting next year, um, that'll be like another forty to forty-five, I don't think we're gonna get the winter recovery. So we're looking at, on a conservative side, a hundred and sixty, maybe one sixty-five available for paving. There's a pickup truck, if we're gonna be doing these big paving, I'd rather just finance it. Um, and if, if we're really gonna do paving, leave it for paving, um, so that's a hundred and sixty thousand for paving. Fishkill Avenue's one thirty, three hundred, who knows, do we know what Garden might be?
What's that?
Do we know what Garden should?
Garden, they, that total with everything, contingency and engineering was a hundred and.
Hundred thirty?
It was a hundred and sixty-one.
Was it that high?
I think it was one sixty-one.
Was there any drainage?
A little bit of drainage, the crown had to be taken down, it was milling it.
Well, they have to mill it.
No, you don't have to mill it.
Well.
You could go over it, as we did on Pauling.
You could go over it.
One sixty-one.
And what drainage was there going to be?
Actually, it was just, they, uh, they said they were adding something, I, I don't know, there was one thing they were adding. And, uh, then there was some sidewalking, there was the, probably the catch basin at the end on the corner of Northern Ave, and they, they had something else in there, but I'm not sure with the piping, something, I don't know, but it wasn't a lot of money, it was like six thousand dollars.
Five hundred, when your feet are stone piped, and five hundred, two hundred feet of curving.
And there's things, yeah, and there's things we could take out of there too, if we didn't wanna do the sidewalks or whatever, we, it was the striping.
Five hundred feet of piping, how long is Garden Street?
They actually gave the length on that, I think it was, is it eight hundred feet? I think it's eight hundred feet.
So five hundred feet goes, um, sixty percent of the length of the street.
Again, these, these are, these are estimates to do the work, to, to, to do the work, if they, if we don't wanna do any piping, we don't have to do any piping.
I, I'm just wondering, the, the pipe is gonna go from.
I don't know, I didn't ask them where the piping is going, I looked at the bottom number and said, wow, that's way more than I thought.
So, um, so Garden, if we did Garden, that would lose up all of our chips money.
If it comes out to that number, which maybe it won't. Fidala gave us, Fidala gave us an, an estimate before we, you know, we were up against, so that we should really have someone, an engineer, take a look at it and, and do the thing at fif- forty.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, which was not prevailing wage, so you can almost double at the eighty, which is still a far way away from where they are at. So, what they're doing is, and this isn't their, this isn't their bid, this is what they're doing from their, their work they've done before. And when they put it out the bid, it comes back to what, as it is, it has nothing to do with the engineer, the, what has to do with the engineer is their percentage. So, but besides that, they're gonna put this out the bid, you're gonna mill this much, you're gonna pave this, and whatever. Fidala comes in at fifty thousand dollars, that's what it is, you know?
Does, does the street need stone pipes?
It doesn't have any drainage, I think it's just all rabbity drains to the end.
Can Fidala do that? Or is he just gonna pave, is he just gonna mill and pave?
Yeah, that's all he had on it, was milling and paving, it wasn't striping, it wasn't sidewalks.
Stone pipes and curving in them.
Exactly.
So, um, to move forward, um, do we wanna decide that we want to move forward with putting out bids for Garden to see what it's gonna come back at, or would we prefer to bid out Fishkill, or do both?
Well, don't you need, you need specs before you can put out a bid, right?
We should get the engineering done on both.
Is, has the engineering been done on Garden?
No, not yet, right.
No, not, not that I know of, I, I didn't know the engineering, I thought, the first time we talked about CHA, I thought we got, we got the diagrams or specs for just a corner, so I thought that's all was done, but then, future research, I guess, we, they got the whole thing done. So, if we do that, we won't have to, we can hold on that, but I think we should do the Garden Street engineering.
Okay, did they give us a quote on what the engineering?
The engineering, they had a thirteen thousand, but I didn't, I asked him, and didn't get a really straight answer on, is that based on the number?
Because they give us a quote here for.
All right, so we can ask them tomorrow, like if we just wanted to pay them to do the engineering right now, to see what we really need to do, so that we can be able to go to bid, I think that's.
Engineering would include, or their number included, engineering, drafting the RFPs, drafting all the documents that are used for the whole project, and to finish the project.
Engineering is thirteen-two, and then the survey, and all that rest of that stuff is now the three thousand, so about sixteen thousand.
So we can, I can talk to him tomorrow, we can talk to him tomorrow, but that's like sixteen thousand, which they said, he looked into, and you could get it out, take it out of Chips money for this pro, that kind of project. He said some you can't, some you can, you can, some you can, this one you couldn't, so you could look into that, I'm, I'm not gonna take his word as gospel, but.
Okay, so for the paving and spending Chips money, um, to-do list, we're gonna see if we have the CHA engineering, see if they have specs good enough and whatever, so, but we're definitely gonna move forward with getting the engineer done for Garden, so I can see if Chip, if, if it's Chips eligible. And then if it is, we could do that in either budget, if it's not Chips eligible, um, I'll have to take a real good look at to see if we can do it this year from savings, or we'll have to at least put that off to next year. So paving, um, as much as I hate pushing decisions, I think this is a decision that needs more research before we can decide what to put in the budget. Any other paving, or it, we're just focusing on Garden and Fishkill?
I mean, we'd have to look to Bugsy, those are the ones that I thought, I thought Garden Street was gonna be simple, but, uh, it has a crown, which you can see, and if you drive down it, it's all patchwork, and the basin at the end needs to be done, so I thought that was one that we should take care of.
Can Bugsy do the basins?
I think he did the one, I would rather whoever's doing the paving work, work it all into their project.
Yeah, on Main Street, we, Ed did not do the, uh, basin, um.
Contech did, right?
Um, Contech, and, and as it turns out, I think the basin was primarily put in place by, I'm gonna say, uh, uh, M H C P.
Matt Hudson. So even in the past, um, even going back to when Eddie was here, his, um, last few years, if significant drain work had to be done at a basin, like taking the whole thing, redoing all the pipes, we brought in a contractor anyway.
Yeah.
Whereas the highway department did more surface level grates, like the top part of the basin, not the entire thing.
Ed did, Fran was right, contacted the, um, we supplied the basin, contacted the work.
Right, Ed did something on the corner of Mountain and Fishkill.
Yes, he did, he did two things, he did something at the corner of Mountain and B.
Which needs to be done again.
Yeah.
And he did something at the bottom of Mountain and Fishkill.
Okay, so we can move ahead on that.
We've got, we've talked about Chips, um, we've talked about the firehouse, what other big projects?
Well, there's a wall, I'm getting them, I, we don't have numbers yet, I think, have we paid, uh, Donald McDonald, that, his, the engineering fee for that, or no?
I haven't seen a bill for that.
Okay, that was three thousand dollars.
Engi, to engineer the wall.
For engineering, and to come up and do the, you know, RFP and everything. And he's talked, we've talked to a couple of masons, but we have not, you know, he hasn't finished a, a final design, he came up with one, and then we talked to masons, and they said, that's not gonna work, or whatever, there's a better way to do it, so, anyway. I'm meeting with him actually tomorrow at, uh, eleven-thirty.
Okay.
To go over any design, if we go with that, then we can put it out the bid, and see what comes out, that's gonna be a big number, which we won't have in this year's budget.
So, anything else big, I'm not saying we're gonna make all these fit, I just wanna put them all on table so we can prioritize, any other big requests?
I talked to, I talked to Bugsy, it seems to tell different stories to different people, but it seems like it needs some work, but the engine body, I think, might be new.
We have two, so which one are we talking about?
He's talking about both, the one that's in the worst repair is, needs some work, but it's not, as, you know, it's not doing, having new motor or transmission or anything major done.
Why don't we just put a lot of work into?
Floorboard and it needs some lighting.
And a dashboard.
Dashboard, that's, that's not a whole reason to buy a new truck, uh.
It's not, if you can get that worked on, right.
Well, I would hope somebody can get lights working on a dashboard.
Not, no, it, it, it's not, it's the lights and the, the dials and anything else, any.
Right, which is electrical.
Okay, I'd say it's electrical.
Yeah, it's the electrical work on the dash that hasn't worked for several years, from my understanding.
Yeah, and I guess there's floorboard work that needs to be done too.
So.
I mean, eventually we're gonna have to get one, I don't, I think we have, definitely can make it through another year, for sure.
Oh, yeah, I was not planning to put it in, in here.
I am exploring a grant for, um, refuse and recycling at the state level. Um, they have one, it came out last year, I've sent an email to see if it's still active, if there's any money left. Um, that could encompass vehicles, um, with compacters or with sorters, it won't cover a pickup, even if it's used to pick up garbage and recycling. It might, the garbage truck on the grant, it's definitely gonna be a fifty percent match, it might just be a recycling truck, I'm still trying to find out all the details. It also can cover somewhat of educational materials and receptacles, if the grant is still active. It shows active on the state's website, but there's no details about it, so I'm trying to figure out if it is, and what we could do with that. Um, what else?
It'll be headlights.
Okay.